Microsoft decided didn't like her password.
Well, sir.
Hi, Roddy.
I'll take a sip, give me a minute.
You may have to run the meetings, so.
And we're gonna start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming. Second item on our agenda is going to be a presentation to the commission by Gordon Thomas Honeywell with a question and answer session to follow, so go right ahead and I'm sure Larry's told you, but we don't expect you to stay for the rest of the meeting because it may not be that exciting. So thanks for coming.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Meg Van Shorle and I am the Project Development Services Director for Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs. And with me also is Trevor Justin. I believe we have kind of twofold purpose of being here tonight. One is, as you said, to answer any questions based on the first presentation and materials that we provided to the commission. If you have any final questions to ask us about lobbying contract for upcoming lobbying contract. And then also, I understood you wanted to meet with me. I wasn't at the July meeting when Brianna and Josh Wees were here. And because some of this contract would involve project development, that you might want to meet with me and find out a little more about me. So I would like to go first and do a little bit of background on myself and talk about Project Development Services and also talk a little bit about some research I've done on your Sargent Oyster House project. And then I'll turn it over to Trevor. And he's also done some research about similar projects in other parts of the state. So I, in terms of background, I came to Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs in 2016 after thirty-five years of working for state government. And I know you must think, well, she must have been five when she started doing that.
Exactly what I thought.
Unfortunately, not true. But my state career gave me many opportunities to actually learn about the needs and issues that face local governments and communities. And that's because for about twenty of those years, I worked in managing local infrastructure financing programs, economic and community development programs for the Department of Commerce. It's now called Department of Commerce, it was Department of Community Development at the time. And also, I managed international marketing programs for the Department of Agriculture. The remaining fifteen years that I had in state government was with the legislature. Part of that time was with the Senate Ways and Means Committee, working on the state operating budget. And then my most recent position with the, was with the House of Representatives, coordinator of the Capital Budget Committee for the House of Representatives. So my state government experience, I think, has well suited me for the job that I'm doing now with Gordon Thomas Honeywell because of the experience and then the network of contacts that I developed over those many years. Project development is really any activity that moves a project from the vision to the reality of it. And of course, a key part of moving it to reality is finding money for it, which is something I spend a lot of my time doing. But in order to secure funding for projects, there needs to be some pre-work done on clearly defining the purpose of the project, what are the key actions, what are the timelines, what are the costs that would be estimated along with it? And once those things are all determined, then going out and looking for funding for the project. I've worked this past year with a couple of local governments on this kind of project where they've said, this is our priority, could you please find some money for us? In one case, a city wanted to extend their basic infrastructure from the downtown out to housing developments. In another case, a county wanted to renovate a juvenile detention center so it could offer more services than when it was originally built in the seventies. So those cases are not the same project, obviously, as your Oyster House restoration project, but the process is very similar in that first I worked with the local officials and the staff to more clearly and comprehensively frame what the project was. And those are the things I mentioned, like what's the purpose of it? What are we really, do we all agree on what we're trying to accomplish? What the timeframe is, what the costs are? And then looking for potential funding. In those two cases, it turned out there were no competitive funding programs for juvenile detention centers and for the type of infrastructure project that the other, that the city was trying to do. So in both those cases, I worked with the staff to develop earmark requests for the legislature. And so I worked with the city and the county folks and then, in a smooth transition, turned over the request to our lobbying team. And then the lobbying team takes it forward into the legislature. So in one case, the local government decided to go after money and they were awarded a capital budget grant last session. In the other case, the county decided to wait until this upcoming session to go after the grant. But in both cases, I did a pretty thorough review of state and federal funding sources. And even though no money, no competitive funding source was found in those cases, they, the local governments were able to go to legislators and say, we did our due diligence. We tried to find competitive funding sources and finding none, we are coming to you for an earmark. So on this particular project, the Sargent Oyster House project, I will be the first to admit, I have a lot to learn about that project, but I have been given some information from Brianna and from Trevor. And so with the information I had, I went to the US, went to USDA Rural Development, called my contact there. And that, this type of project is something that they would be interested in taking a look at. They have something called community facilities grants and loans. And starting October first, which is the federal fiscal year, that would be an opportunity to have them come out, assess the project and see whether they might be able to participate financially. I also gave a call to Pacific Coast Shellfish Growers Association. And I thought it might be kind of a long shot, but actually, when I talked to their executive director, apparently, they already had this project on their radar, have actually provided some contributions to the project and fully expect that at some point, they might get involved again because they said it's definitely a very significant project for, you know, historically for that industry. And then finally, the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation has quite a list of potential funding sources for historic properties. So that would be, although I haven't done any work related to this project on that, that would be a place to start to look for some other sources of funding. So with that, I'd love to be able to work with, with the Port of Allen. I live in Olympia, so my husband used to be a port commissioner, so, for the Port of Olympia. So I do have an appreciation for the work that ports do. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions that you have.
Meg, through the USDA, is that, would that just be a sole grant through the rural development? Or would that be funding that they would try to get out of the federal budget for the Oyster House?
Well, it would be a grant, they, so they get money through the federal government for their programs. So it would be, it wouldn't be an earmark, it would be part of the competitive grant.
Okay.
Process. And I don't know if it would be a grant or a loan. I mean, there's some, you know, income, you know, community income stipulations and all of that that determine whether something can be a full grant or partial grant.
So one of the questions I have is, you know, we have multiple projects, Oyster House being one of them. We have a park in Belfair that we're partnering in. There's, there's a sports park that we talk about. We have a dock renovation that we do have money for now, but how shovel-ready do you want, do you think that project should be before you get involved? Or are you the one that's gonna make it shovel-ready or help us get there? Because we, the Oyster House, we've just taken over in the last, you know, couple of meetings.
Right.
And we don't even know how much it's gonna cost. There's people that'll sit in the audience and tell us what they think, but.
Right.
Is now the time to engage you in that? Or is after we have some kind of engineer's report that gives us an idea of what we're looking at, the time to do it?
Well, you know, I have, I get involved with projects everywhere from the very beginning discussions about them, on framing the project, to when a project's ready to go, where's money that can come, you know, that can be gotten for that project? So now is as good a time as any. Having said that, you know, there is a need for having engineering services and sort of adjunct consultants that have other skills than mine to work as a team on projects like that.
Sometimes going after the money for those engineering services is a possibility.
Right, yes. Was that clear, my answer?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't have to have a project ready for you to go get funding, or you can help us get it ready.
No, no, but you know, when, the more shovel-ready it is, the more that the i's have been dotted and t's crossed, the more compelling your story's gonna be for a funder. And the legislature, you know, is, is one where they do want to know if we provide an earmark in the 2019 budget, are you going to be ready to go during that year or the next year? Or is this kind of a pipe dream? So there, there's gonna be some tough questions asked before the legislature or an agency will say yes to grants.
And I think I understood you to say that you won't just be looking for capital budget money, that there's, you'll be looking for other money for us as well.
There can be other, you know, if you have another, a priority project that has to do with operations, you know, I can do that as well.
But not just capital money, that's not.
Right.
Only what you'll be looking.
That's not only, but you know, it also is a matter of what's your priority and, and the timing of it. Because I think under this contract, this includes Project Development Services and lobbying. And so I think normally what we would do is use this fall, for example, to get ready for an ask of the legislature. So then, as time progresses on this contract, other projects can be added.
Got it. Would it be, would we be asking for several projects? Or would we want to pick one, a priority, and kind of stick with it per year? Because we have, we do have a handful of projects that we want, we want to do, but.
Right, yeah. I think that the proposal, I was looking at it briefly, talks about for the first year, it would be lobbying for one funding request for the 2019 legislative session and having me help in the preparation of that request. And then each of the subsequent years talks about, you know, using me in a slightly different way. So I think over the three years that are in this proposal, there would be an opportunity to do multiple, multiple projects. But I think this fall, we would want to focus on your top priority for the legislative session.
If I can just interject, sorry to cut late.
That's okay, yeah.
The principal of their firm. You're, you've increased your odds of being successful with the legislature if you focus on one request rather than trying to advance multiple requests within the legislature. You're making multiple requests within one budget, within capital budget, essentially competing with yourself.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I have a question along that same line. If we were focused on that project and we go after a capital budget request for it, that doesn't preclude us from looking for other monies in other places?
Correct, correct. And Trevor, I don't know if you've already spoken, but Trevor did some preliminary look at other types of projects throughout the state that are similar and how they have packaged and marketed their project. And he's prepared to speak to some other.
Thanks, Meg, great, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I guess that's my cue. Just introduce myself, Trevor Justin, again with the firm. Little bit of background on myself. Started legislative work, actually, while still in college. I was the, one of the student lobbyists for Central Washington University. So familiar with the legislative process from, from the higher education standpoint, from the budget standpoint on that front. After that internship, I was with the Washington State Medical Association for, for over three years. So been doing this work for about four, four full years now. Brianna and Meg are obviously way smarter than I am, so I just take orders from them. But, yeah, did some preliminary research, excuse me, on some of the other projects, some of the other historical sites around the state on what, you know, you guys kind of get some ideas for, for the Sargent Oyster House. One of the first ones I looked at was the Muckel Teal Lighthouse or Light Station, also known. That piece was originally owned by the US Coast Guard, as you can imagine. And the city of Muckel Teo started leasing the light station in 1991 from the Coast Guard. The city made improvements, you know, kind of replaced some floors and made some upgrades to the building. And then the Muckel Teo Historical Society was running tours on that property. In 2001, the US Coast Guard transferred ownership from the Coast Guard to the city and the Historical Society. So that's kind of one way how a transaction can go. The light station was used with the city and the Historical Society for group and special events, weddings, parties, field trips, tours, things of that nature. And that lighthouse is on the National Register of Historic Places, which would include it to be on the state register, the Washington State Heritage Register. Another piece I looked at was the Gig Harbor Net Shed from the Scansy Brothers. There's actually about seventeen net sheds, so there's, there's a variety of them. I just looked at the Scansy Brothers one. I don't know if you know what a net shed is, I certainly didn't when I looked at it, but it's a house, a structure to kind of store fishing nets. As you could imagine, there'd be a good location in Gig Harbor for that. That net shed was a nonprofit educational organization established in 2015, so rather recently. And that was dedicated to preservation advancement of the fishing family heritage by Gig Harbor's commercial fishing industry. That foundation secured a twenty-year lease with the city of Gig Harbor to ensure seasonal public access to the facility. And what they do there is, you know, they maintain artifacts, develop displays and educational programming for, for that industry and schedule summer, summer tours and even holiday parties and events like that. That net shed is also on the National and State Register. And then one other piece I looked at was the South Wouldbe Historical Society Museum in Langley, Washington, up there in Wouldbe Island. That museum, that is more of a, just a museum. And that's ran by the South Wouldbe Historical Society, made up entirely of volunteers working to keep the museum, which used to be a historic landmark for the Lager's bunkhouse, actually, in operation. And that society offers tours of the museum, which includes, you know, ancient artifacts, history of local Native Americans and artifacts from, from the city. Potential uses, obviously, you guys have your own building. I know you guys were talking about using it as a historical museum, potentially an educational center for aquaculture and. for aquaculture and marine science, I saw in an article. And then, I don't know if this is your plan, but you know, another community event center to host weddings, banquets, meetings, parties, things of that nature. So just some things to keep in mind for as you proceed forward. And Meg obviously covered a lot of the grant opportunities, so, yeah, that's just a couple, couple like-minded projects that you guys could kind of get a flavor for what you wanted to do going forward.
Did you have any information on how they were funded, or if they were funded?
So a lot of the projects, once they're included on the, the National Heritage and the Washington Heritage Register, that opens it up to numerous grants. Actually gave the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation a call, and there was a link on their webpage that had all different sorts of grants that Meg would, would explore. I did talk about your site, they obviously mentioned that it's up on blocks, so it's, it's not, it's not feasible at the moment, but once you kind of proceed forward and get that thing in a sturdy location, you could apply for the state register and the national register, and that opens it up to a lot of different grants. And obviously, we could work on capital budget funding as well, so.
Great.
I think one of the reasons I asked Trevor to do this research and share this with you is there are some key decisions that Meg would navigate for you all, and hopefully Meg, prior to asking for legislative funding. Do you want it to be on the historic register, so it does open up to all these grant programs? How do you want the facility to be used? Does it have a community benefit, or is it purely an event venue? You can kind of look and see what other communities have done with similar assets. But you do need to have a vision of what this facility is. Where Meg can really assist with that is knowing, well, here's the grant programs that you'd be eligible for, so as you're picking your uses, pick a use that not only makes sense for the community, but also maybe lends a good story on the funding.
Judy is going to come in the door.
Oh, good. Welcome.
Get through.
I haven't done that in a long time.
Forget?
Yes.
Oh, I've done that a couple times.
The Oyster House is Judy's project.
Yeah, so we're just talking about our project, and the, the firm has given us a presentation and talked quite a bit about what they could do with the Oyster House. And it's all on video, though, so you can be able to see it later. But they've done some research, some really good research, and gave us some information, and...
Good.
Kind of, it helped me a lot.
We just shored up some more, another wall yesterday. We're working on it, we're good.
Trevor did say that since it's on blocks, that it's not eligible for any of the national or local historic money, but once we get it to a secure spot, which I'm sure you knew, but then it opens up a whole bunch of new grant-type funding, yeah.
I mean, as an initial funding request, you could go more robust than this, but initial funding request could just be asking the legislature to have you get permanent placement somewhere so that then you could develop a more robust funding plan with the political environment.
Yeah, the hard part is kind of like putting the cart before the horse. It has to be restored first. I mean, because it's fallen apart, so it's got to be restored. Then we can put it over the water. And we do understand that it's not eligible for any national registry.
I have a question. Part of the project is going to involve removing the old boat launch grant that's out there. Would that be eligible for some of this money as well?
Removing the boat launch?
Right.
You know, there's, the Recreation and Conservation Office has a number of grant programs.
Yeah, I'm working on one right now.
Are you, this all? Yeah, so the boat launch or the voting facilities program?
That's the one I'm working on.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, that's where I would look first, would be one of those programs.
Okay.
And depending on cost, you could roll it into a larger request. I mean, you're going to have to figure out, kind of put together a base of the project that is realistic for the legislative political environment. So I don't know what, we'd have to like dive into specific dollar amounts.
So would you put together like a, a presentation to the legislatures, legislators, and said, okay, here's the project, here's how we're going about it, here's where money for this part of it's coming? Is that how that works?
There's a form that will vote the Senate and the House for each. The Senate has its forms and the House has a form. And so we would be filling that form out, or working with you to fill it out. And then that becomes the basis of the request. And then Brianna and Trevor would be having you meet with your legislative delegation for the Senate and the House to share the form with them and the project with them, so, and to garner their sponsorship of your request.
Okay.
And is that through the capital budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's kind of what we've been...
Yeah, that's...
Because there's lost strings type thing.
And I'm, before you got here, I was mentioning that my last job was with the House Capital Budget, as a leader of the House Capital Budget. So...
Oh, it works.
Wonderful.
She made it work.
Now she gets to fill out.
Put your name in the corner.
Oh, great.
But I mean, it really is the appropriate place for restoration project.
Great. Okay, good.
Did you have any other questions?
I just, you know, I wonder about, I'm sure there's no data on success rate, but I mean, so we, we lay out an expense of our own, and we're a small port, I mean, return on investment, is it likely, highly likely? It's probably not even something you can answer.
Brianna has incredible information on her lobbying, return on investment. Every public safety client that has hired us has seen a return on investment for the two years.
That's good news.
A full legislative plan, yeah. If we realize that the request that we're working on in one year is, for some reason, fairly flawed, sometimes we will fit it to a different request or repackage it for the second year so that we can be sure that you're seeing that return on investment. So, you know, if, for some reason, we discover that, you know, we put together the best package we could for the Sergeant Oyster House, but it's just really not viable for capital direct appropriation funds, then we were trying to make sure you're still getting funding from some other organization.
We can get multiple years' funding on the same project?
Yes, it does, that's where Meg's expertise... Becomes very helpful, because when you receive capital budget funding, you're going to correct my fingers wrong, right? When you receive capital budget funding, you have to deliver a portion of the project that is beneficial or usable to the community. Or you cannot spend the money until you receive the remainder of the funding. So you, you'd want to explore how you can phase it, or whether you could get exception to that general rule, which we really don't advise. But there are sort of parameters around that. Sometimes, you know, going back to the well multiple times for one project, you want to think strategically about telling the legislators back from the get-go that we're anticipating this to be a four-year project. We need $7 million, but we don't need it all this year, we need it over four years. And here is how we're going to tackle this, so that then they can expect to have you keep coming back.
All the questions I had, thank you.
Thank you.
Being that I came in late, I missed the whole boat.
I came in late too, so I could do it again.
Well, I do have some questions, but I don't know if it's really...
Ask away.
Yeah, ask away, that's why they're here.
Well, some of it is, you know, the, we have some legislators that we've been working with. You know, of course, it's an election year. I think one of them has given us one of those forms to make sure we get on with some.
Yeah, I have, I have both House and Senate forms.
Okay, so...
They do change them, I mean, they update them every year. And I just recently called them, and they are, they haven't got their new forms developed yet for this upcoming session, but what you have will give you a good idea of what'll be asked.
Well, and the hard part for this, now we have a volunteer, he's the industrial designer, acting as an engineer, but he's really qualified. And he's working with us and going to get all the drawings, and he's getting lumber lists together. We haven't had good, solid numbers for a while. I mean, we've had some numbers, but kind of not in a schematic situation. So I think with these updated numbers, that will help, and that's kind of tied our hands to a degree. Now Bonnie Knight has championed this a lot, and we've gone to the Historical Caucus, as I'm sure you're aware of, and been pitching this, so they know a lot about it already. But now we just have to get the push. The numbers are pretty close of what was preliminarily suggested. I'm thinking they might be more, and maybe that's my question. If we ask for too much, is that better? Or do we ask for, you gotta, is it a narrow margin that you really have to be close? Otherwise, is that not, ruin your credibility if you're not close? I guess that's my question.
I mean, I would think you should be close. If you go in with something that people are going to look at, you just think it's wildly out of, you know, out of reality, well, I mean, this is a hard... It really, it really depends on the dollar amount that you're asking for. I mean, there also is the general rule of ask for more and expect to receive less. If you are asking for more, you have to have an explanation of what that money would go for. And if you were to get it all, you would want to be a good responsible steward of delivering a project with that money. So a lot of it depends on what that dollar amount is.
Well, I think now we're getting... Just put together, engineering is close. And with that, the engineering, we can actually go out and get bids. Not that necessarily a contractor would do it, but then it gives us a, a better handle on how much it's actually going to cost. And because we're doing it so slow, I mean, there's, the building's pretty hurt bad, you know, but it's doable, anything's doable if you've got enough funds, but, you know, it's been kind of a slow go. And part of it, at least for me, is that without the funding, I feel like my hands are tied. You know, I can't go out and go get people to volunteer when I can't promise them we've got the materials to do the job, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's what I was talking about a little bit too, is, you know, it's one thing to ask for money, but you have to do kind of a pre-work in order to have the, sort of the timelines, the costs, what purpose are you doing this for, and have agreement. Because I've seen situations where, once you start talking about it, you realize some, there's not necessarily agreement even among the people who are the proponents of it, about what, what to do with that property, for example, or that building, for example.
Judy, when we had, I think it was the last time you guys were here, we had the Oyster House meeting before our meeting. And then, so we had people in the crowd, and somebody had said their estimation was a million. Is that total project or just restoration?
Probably five to 700, that would be including everything. I mean, that's high. Bonnie's estimation was a little lower, but we have done a lot of work already. I mean, it doesn't look like it, but we have done some. So, but there's still a lot to do, you know, I mean, we're, right now, I'm just concentrating on trying to get the structure redone, but then there's still, you know, the historical part, the museum part that needs to be done, putting all that together. We thought we had somebody, but she's not able to, to be on board for the museum part. But again, you know, we need hard numbers, and we don't have all the pieces put together.
Do you have a site for it?
Yeah, the old launch ramp.
We were tearing it all off.
Tearing down the launch?
Yeah, it's derelict, you can't use it. I mean, you can walk on it, but you can't use it. So that's in the plan. We are working with a biologist, marine biologist, who has volunteered his time. Or did you guys already know that, I'm running, me and myself? No, he's done a lot of work, and he's done previous work, his name's Bill Ray. And he's done a lot of work for us previously, matter of fact, to help our dock, part of a dock extension, was it? Can't remember what part Bill helped with us, but...
Permitting.
Yeah. So he's been working with us on, on getting this done, and has a lot of, just a good rapport with Army Corps and DFW, and so it's been really helpful.
We're also in the process of having an archaeological survey done on the entire park property. For any future projects, it's going to already be done. We ran into it with the Marina project, and thought, in the end, it just made more sense to just do the whole park at once now.
That's right, and as you know, RCO grants, there, if you get a grant, then you have to face that anyway. It's, you know, it's really smart. And when you weren't here, I was talking about how I had called the Pigeon Sound, or the Pacific Coast Oyster Grower, or Shellfish Growers Association, because I had a contact there. I don't know if you have been in contact with them, but they knew about the...
Pigeon is a donation?
Yes, that's what she said. And that it's really important structure for them.
Yep.
And that they kind of expect that at some point in the... Back to them, I don't know if, whether that would be for a grant, but it might be for, you know, museum materials that oyster growers or other shellfish growers have in their basements or attics that could be displayed in a museum.
Yeah.
So it was kind of a great conversation, because I didn't know that they already, it was already on the radar screen. We've actually had a lot of support, Slaughter Drive...
I've just donated, Taylor Shellfish, Pacific Growers, gosh, who else? There's been just a lot of local people as well. Like I said, and I've been amazed about how many really highly qualified people have donated their time and effort. Like the guy, Mike Ross, who is our engineer, he used to work for NASA, and he's, he's invented a few things. He's really amazing guy. So he's, he's going to be the project manager for a while. He's working, you know, free until the end of this year, and then we got to probably pay him something.
It's great that you have all those community partners that have put together the funding requests. We work to try and get letters of support from each of them to accompany their requests and make that part of the lobbying strategy on how they engage with the legislative process to enhance our class.
And the legislature usually likes that other people have skin in the game, so to speak, so you don't have to come into the state to fund the whole thing. It's good to see that a lot of other community partners have, have put up funds for it, so I think that helps them kind of get on board a little bit more, and so, all the donations can attract, right?
Yeah.
Society, yes, yes, it has. The port hasn't really gotten anything. The port owns the building, but North Bay Historical Society has been the, the driving force behind it.
And we paid for a permit.
Yes, we've paid for permit and shoreline permit, a building permit.
I think if you, if you all watching before we were with the contractor, we want to start with an initial meeting where we kind of go through all of the details, kind of walk through the form, and talk about packaging strategy, funding amount, all of that. Probably like an hour and a half, two hour conversation.
Okay.
And then Brianna? Brianna, for me, if, as long as we could do that, to track, we look for the legislature, but then we're also looking for more private donations and support, even if we have to go back to the same people again. Because as long as that building's sitting out there, I mean, Judy and her volunteers have been doing an amazing job, but it's, it's not going to last too many years without it being refurbished. So I'm being quiet, because I'm full support of doing this. So having worked with lobbyists for a long time, it's, I understand the importance and how many doors you could open up for us, so.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, so I was waiting.
That's going to be the end of that section.
Do you all have any more questions?
I can have you take over from here, just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
I'm sorry?
We'll just wait to hear from you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we've got... Yeah, unless we're going to go to the resolution.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Are we allowed to discuss?
Uh, yes, you can.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, you can discuss it.
I, I think you both, Scott, probably the last meeting, but I've, I've known the firm. They're very reputable, and I really liked, this is the first time I heard their presentation, that approach of just, hey, there's private and public partnership we get for that. I think for the port, for the port, if we were to see movement on that Oyster House, there'd be so many people excited, you've heard me say that before. So spending the money on, on these folks in this firm to do it, I think it'd be money well spent, so. So, and hopefully years from now, people can enjoy that oyster house. And it's not costing us that much for the return that we would eventually need to get that thing in the water. So, I mean, that's my opinion.
I appreciate that. My concern is that we, it's twenty-five, twenty, twenty-four this year. And how much next year? Thirty next year?
Thirty, thirty. And then thirty-six the third year.
You know, and what's that taking away from? I'm in support of, I'm gonna vote yes on going forward with our hiring the firm. But I'm concerned with the money. Now, in my head, I can say, well, we've been getting, we've been budgeting twelve thousand in timber tax. We've been getting seventy-five, so there's the money. But I think we have other things that we also need to consider. I do believe that the oyster house is our top project. That that is what we should be spending our effort on, and money. We haven't been spending money on it. To hear that they have a hundred percent success rate in the biennium, you know, kind of made me feel better about the decision. But, and today's probably not the day to discuss it, but do we need to discuss different, you know, a funding source for everyday business? Because, you know, last year we bought a truck because we had extra money. This year, we're gonna pay for lobbying, next year lobbying, next year lobbying. But are we putting anything away for a rainy day? If a piece of property comes up, do we have money set aside to buy that? With that said, I'm in support of this.
Well, once we, once we get the Marina project finished, we should be generating new, you know, that's a complete new revenue stream. And part of that project will be the pay machine, like we have at the North Shore. And you saw the difference that made.
Absolutely.
So, where I don't think we're gonna have the amount of difference that we had out there, I think it's a difference that we'll see.
Yeah.
And, you know, so...
I'm just worried.
You know, at a dollar a foot per day, per boat, and we can do twelve boats up to fifty feet, you know, it's got a lot of revenue potential. So...
I'm kind of with you in one sense.
I mean, I am too. I'm the one that's gotta bring the budget to you.
I read it today.
Yeah. And I'm confident that we can go forward, if nothing else, this year. The one thing that they did say to us was, if we're not happy after the first year or there's an issue that we're not bound to the other two years, that they would rather have us part company as friends...
Sure.
And come back when things got better than to have an ugly contract resolution situation. So, I like that.
Well, that gives me a little more peace. One of my concerns too, I mean, the oyster house, we need to get that funded and done. But for three years in a row, what kind of projects do we have? You know, the oyster house is gonna be one big project. And, you know, we haven't even really dealt with, what is that going to bring in? You know, we still own it, but we haven't really leased it out yet. We haven't gone that far, because it's been sitting there, but that could be...
But that's another revenue source to consider.
It could be. It depends on who leases it. You know, North Bay doesn't have a lot of money. It would be good if they could operate it. But that might be an option for us to take it over and operate it.
Right.
Because it could be. But as a museum, I'm not sure, I go too far into detail about that, I think. Because that's something that we do need to work out. It could be a source of income. But I don't think we, my concern, I think like with you, three years of it, I don't know if we have enough projects to pay for that, for them for three years.
Well...
Well, I think we could come up with enough projects.
Yeah, I don't think finding projects...
Sweetwater, and I saw you had, you know, at least searching for industrial property or maybe even recreational property, or...
Or just property that comes on the market, kind of like the situation we have with Overton.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, and because I've been talking to some of the legislators that are up for reelection, I feel pretty confident that they are behind it. So, but I don't know if just us going in and asking for money would be enough clout to get that without...
They have more clout than we have.
I, yeah.
You got money for the Marina, though.
Yes, I did.
Quite a bit, too.
Yes, yes, I did.
I know, it's just, I think I'm willing to try it. I don't know if we can do three years of it, though that's my only concern. And I don't want them to feel, you know, showeded or disregarded either.
Well, we'll try it for a year, see how it goes.
Okay. I'm willing to try it.
Since the meeting, you know, I've got more information. I appreciate what you have to say, and I'm ready to move forward.
That helps, thank you.
I mean, they were amazing for me in Port Orchard, you know, which is why I called them.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, first year, they got us seven hundred. Second year was thirty thousand. It's kind of the same kind of structure we have here. And the second year, they got us over four hundred to finish the project that the seven hundred started. So, and they got money for something else for it.
What do we need to do? Do we need to have a motion or just pass a resolution?
I think we do.
Yeah, need a motion to allow me to engage in a contract.
And where is the...
And I have a resolution that, since that exceeds my spending authority.
Okay.
But you may wanna, what I've done is I calculated the amount for the three years. So, you could either do, you know, change it to one year and change the amount, or...
I think I'm okay with going with the full three years. And then if we make a change, we'll have to amend it.
Yeah, come back and do it. Then, if we do go forward with the three years, we won't have to fool with this again.
Right.
You know, whatever you wanna do.
Well, I would make a motion that we pass a resolution that allows our director to enter into an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell and the...
Here's the resolution.
The amount there.
You wanna read it?
So, do we have to hand the motion first?
We'll read it.
And I changed it. That one says August sixth. I changed the date on it on here, so I can print a new one for you. I'll design when we get done.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Okay.
Be it resolved by the commissioners of the Port of Allen as follows. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen, it says has met, it probably should say have met, and considered the possibility of hiring a lobbying for, it says form, firm...
Let me get in here and look at this.
Here, I'll spell check it for you. To further the port's interests. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence and testimony presented, hereby agrees to hire a lobbying firm to further the port's interest. While the amount of an agreement to secure such services exceeds the executive director's spending authority as delegated to him on June tenth, twenty sixteen, the commissioners hereby delegate a one-time authority to sign a contract for the port to secure lobbying services to the executive director. Whereas the Port of Commissioners, Port of Allen, hereby authorize the port's executive director to sign a contract with a lobbying firm approved by the commissioners, not to exceed the total cost of ninety thousand dollars payable in monthly installments over a three-year period, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of the Port of Allen at the regular public meeting thereof, held the sixth day of August...
Twenty-seventh day.
Of September.
Twenty-seventh day of September, twenty eighteen, and duly authenticated in open session by the signatures of the commissioners, voting in favor thereof, and the seal of the commission. Adopted this twenty-seventh day of August, September twenty eighteen.
And Ted seconded it.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, move. With corrections, here we go.
Don't, let me print a new one and all.
Mm-hmm.
Get it to you by the end of the meeting.
I ran out the door and forgot my laptop.
Oh, I've read, I've read through. So, if you wanna read, or if you need a...
Okay. Did you update this narrative?
Yes, I did. A little bit, not much, but I'll just go ahead and read it. It's basically the same.
Okay.
Okay, and tonight's agenda is a revised draft copy of the two thousand nineteen budget for year review. The only changes from the draft budget presented on September fifth was adding one thousand dollars to the legal cost line item, as requested by Commissioner Jackson. This was accomplished by reducing a number of line item expenses by small amounts. As we did at the September fifth meeting, I'll attempt to be a bit proactive here and explain what I anticipate your questions might be. What you have in front of you are the two thousand eighteen budget numbers, as well as the August thirtieth year-to-date budget versus actual numbers, and their percentage of this year's budget for comparison. As you can see, we're on track with the two thousand eighteen budget for just about every item except for a few unanticipated expenses. The overall expense budget is up by a little over sixteen thousand dollars. However, on the plus side, revenue is up by an almost like amount. This budget does include twenty-four thousand dollars for the lobbyists, if you choose to hire them, five thousand dollars for the oyster house in the capital budget, and five thousand dollars more for January to April expenses than in two thousand eighteen. Otherwise, we'd be eighteen thousand dollars under last year's budgeted expenses. It also includes a more than two thousand dollar increase from Endurus. In looking at two thousand eighteen expenses, there's a significant amount of one-time expenses that were not budgeted for, like a twenty-six thousand dollar truck and over eight thousand dollars in grading a new rock for all our parking lots. There's also quite a bit more travel than we budgeted for, with the majority of that being mileage and hotels for bias training, which is incorporated in the two thousand nineteen budget. As you can see, payroll is up by just over ninety-five hundred dollars. While that sounds like a lot, a lot is included in that, including raises for staff, as well as state mandated increases for yourselves. We budgeted one dollar per hour raises for both Dawn and Leanne, and a four-point-four percent raise for myself, which is slightly less than you all awarded me in two thousand eighteen. I believe Dawn and Leanne are worth much more than what we budgeted, but that's the money we have to work with. Dawn saves us significant amounts of money by being able to do work we'd otherwise have to contract out. Leanne has really hit the long ball, learning bias, and has done so under some very trying circumstances. I believe I've earned a raise as well by managing us into the financial position we're in, especially considering where we were when I started here in two thousand fifteen. Also, by obtaining the capital budget money for the Marina project and my serving as the hands-on construction manager for that project, as well as the oyster house and launch ramp removal project, will save us a significant amount of money as well. Based on the amount of meetings each of you attend, it's obvious from the year-to-date numbers that Commissioner Scott by far attends many more community and other meetings outside the regular port meetings, which is why her overall compensation is budgeted somewhat higher than the other two commissioners. I had discussed the staff increases in advance with Commissioner Scott, so I all hope you will concur on the amounts budgeted. Also, included in the payroll total are significant increases for mileage for everyone over last year. This is one place we did miss the mark in two thousand eighteen. Although, as I said, the bulk of that increase was for unbudgeted travel to Spokane for bias. The mileage numbers for two thousand nineteen are also based on both the year-to-date figures as well as WPPA's two thousand nineteen meeting schedules that require travel. For example, the spring meeting will be held in Spokane this year. According to MapQuest, the one-way mileage is three hundred and twenty-three miles from here to the Davenport Hotel, meaning that for each attendee, the round trip cost for mileage is three fifty-two oh seven. We budgeted for three people for that meeting. The environmental seminar will be held in Shalane. The round trip mileage cost for that is two forty-five twenty-six per person. Budgeted for two people. However, after reviewing the agenda for this year's meeting, we didn't see the value in attending, as almost nothing will apply to us. We don't know if that'll be the same case next year, because there's no agenda yet. The Small Port Seminar in Leavenworth, which everyone usually attends, is a hundred and seventy-nine miles, or one ninety-five eleven per person. WPPA hasn't set a location for the commissioner's seminar yet, so we budgeted mileage for all three of you to go to Spokane, that being the worst-case scenario. This is perhaps the largest percentage in dollar increase over last year's numbers, but perhaps the most realistic mileage numbers ever. Also, facilities maintenance numbers are significantly up from two thousand seventeen and from what we budgeted in two thousand eighteen. The bulk of that, over eight thousand dollars, was for grading the rock in all of our parking lots. This was an expense that wasn't budgeted at all last year, but was needed. We spent more for higher-quality rock with the expectation of only needing to grade it in two thousand nineteen. So far, it's met our expectations, but a rainy day, a rainy winter would be the true test. Also checked with bias about the amount of our annual fee. They told me to anticipate a five percent increase over what we paid this year, so that cost is in this budget as well. On the revenue side, we won't have revenue numbers for property tax revenue until later this year. So, we did the same thing as we did last year. We added one percent to the number for this year. That number will undoubtedly be higher than we budgeted, which is a good thing and provides us with some cushion. Same thing with the timber tax revenue. We budgeted eleven thousand in two thousand eighteen, but the number's been significantly higher and the year isn't out yet, which means there could possibly be even more yet to come. As I've done every year, I prefer to budget revenue very conservatively and receive more than we anticipate and expenses liberally, so we always have a cushion rather than the other way around. As part of our budgeting process, we've also included a moderate rate increase, a thousand dollars overall, and anticipated additional revenue for the water system beginning in January, which, as you know, is an enterprise fund. I will present new rate recommendations at the November regular meeting. We'll have a public hearing at that meeting and the December meeting for approval of an increase. Currently, the waterfront is in the black, which it was not before the increase last year. However, any unexpected repairs will have to come from our general fund reserves, because we have almost no reserves in the waterfront itself. I'd like us to start building reserve for those eventualities. Those kind of things aren't ifs, but whens, and we need to be prepared. Also, after this year, the system only has one more payment on the IDD loan. We've also had our pay station on the North Shore reprogrammed to include the credit card discounts we pay, which averaged three-point-five percent per transaction. We've absorbed these costs since installing the machine, but since we've obtained public acceptance of the pay station, I see no reason to continue doing that. This'll boost revenue there as well as in Allen when we install the machine here, as our merchant fees will all be covered. However, we didn't budget any of that as additional revenue. Also, we anticipate an amount of additional mortgage revenue in Allen once the Marina project is finished, but didn't account for any of that in our revenue calculations either. Excuse me. The one thing that I'd really like to point out is that our cash carryover is a healthy seventy-nine, three oh three sixty. However, if we hadn't purchased a truck, which was twenty-six, three, twenty-three, forty-two, budgeted twenty-four thousand for the lobbyists, and added five thousand over last year to our January to April expenses, our cash carryover would be one thirty-four, six, twenty-four, twenty-six, which would be up thirty-two thousand, three thirty-seven, twenty-six over our two thousand eighteen total of one oh two, two ninety. So, with that, I hope I addressed most of your questions, and I'm happy to answer any that you might have.
We haven't looked at the budget yet, but the oyster house for five thousand, you know, I talked to you about that, that, you know, North Bay has some funds, but we may need some immediate funds. And I was just concerned that if we have to spend more, because before, you know, we had almost fourteen thousand budgeted. And that's kind of what a lot of...
Well, we haven't spent more than five.
No. Well, that's true. I guess just knowing that it was there, but again, we've had our hands...
That, and anticipating the lobbyists getting us some money.
Yeah.
And the money that North Bay Historical Society has.
Yeah.
The grant money they have. What I see is us maybe having to front some of that money by getting it reimbursed.
Okay, so, I mean, that was my only concern. So, I'm good with the five thousand. But if we need it, at least we have this carryover.
Yeah, we've got the cash carryover, and we may get more if the timber tax keeps coming in the way it's been. I mean, at the rate that it's come in, it could exceed a hundred thousand dollars this year.
Okay.
So...
So, I'm pretty good with all that.
One thing I'd like to, I'm sorry. Go ahead. On the oyster house, is it possible that we're taking more of a ownership of it or a ownership of it to see what the expenses are? I haven't seen what we're spending that five thousand dollars or fourteen thousand dollars on. So, I guess if... on, so I guess if, if somebody's keeping the books, if the board commissioners could see what that money's being spent on, so...
What the board money's went for has just been permitting.
Oh, just permitting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, there, it's not like materials or anything?
No.
Okay.
All we've spent was the building permit and the shoreline-
Okay, got it.
Yeah. And North Bay's been carrying the rest.
Okay.
Which has been through donations and fundraisers.
Okay, great, got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, under payroll, we've got the executive director's budgeted amount of payroll at eighty-five thousand, which is the, isn't that the amount we earmarked for everything?
Yeah, the amount, uh...
So, what I'm seeing is... So, I don't, I don't think that eighty-five thousand is your pay, right?
No, that's what it was. You know, what we budgeted last year was eighty-one, five, ten, plus sixty-four, seventy, in payroll taxes, and ten thousand, three twenty, three fifty, one eighty for retirement. And then mileage, which, you know, really isn't payroll.
Right, we separated it out. So, eighty-one, five, ten is currently what you're making.
Right. Although, you know, with all of the back and forth that went on with all the problems in payroll, that's not what I've collected.
Well, I was gonna say, we haven't, we haven't resolved that yet either.
But that was what we budgeted for last year.
Okay.
That was what you all approved after we-
Have you gotten less? Is that what?
Yeah, I have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can tell you when it's been, if you wanna, let me do the math here.
So then, what we're saying is that your monthly income is seven thousand, eighty-three, thirty-three.
What I would have collected, or will collect in by, with the September payroll, would be fifty-eight thousand, five hundred.
So far.
In spite of the fact we budgeted eighty-one.
But, aren't you on a, and I know we go through this every year.
(laughing) Yeah.
So, way back when, in the beginning-
Right.
We said we had, was it seventy-five?
Eighty.
Eighty. And that was to cover benefits, payroll, payroll taxes, everything.
Right.
So now, we're saying we're at eighty-five, and that doesn't cover benefits, payroll taxes.
No, that covers all that.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
That covers all that.
Because further down, you have payroll taxes at sixty-five oh two.
Well, no, the eighty-five covers insurance for me and my family.
Well, so, so seventy-five for everything, and now it's-
Payroll taxes is what we would pay as a, as a port, like an employer.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, I'm just, I just wanna make sure, because I know we still have to resolve in retirement. So, is the number eighty-five plus sixty-five hundred plus ten thousand, thirty, not twenty-four hundred?
Twenty-four hundred is mileage.
I know, I will take that out. So, is the executive director's total compensation that started out three years ago at-
At eighty.
At eighty thousand, is it now eighty-five?
One oh one.
It's the total?
Or...
Eighty-five plus sixty-five oh two.
Right.
Plus the ten.
But those are payroll taxes that we pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's like with my employees, you know, you don't kind of count that as their wage. It's an employer cost.
But, you know, added that eighty-five- Right. Almost thirteen thousand of it is insurance.
So, at, when we did eighty three years ago, was that total compensation, or was that, it was never to be the wage? It was pay, benefits-
Plus insurance.
Which, which we don't provide, pay, benefits-
I don't think tax-
Retirement. No, I, I believe it was.
Was that included in there, the taxes? Was it, wasn't included in there, was it?
It was eighty-five-
Total?
Total for everything. So, I would like to maybe look at that, because we do have an issue to resolve still, and if we can look at it and try to resolve the issue. And the, the issue is that it's this, I mean, it's this, I don't understand it. I was part of the original, when we, when we set it up, it was a big leap of faith for us, because Rusty was making like sixty thousand total, so we wanted a full-time employee, we wanted to, to pay government wages, pay benefits, pay retirement, everything. But let's just sit down and let's figure it out once and for all, so we don't have to have this discussion every year. And the other part is, we have to do an annual evaluation every year.
Yeah, which we haven't really done as a board.
Which we haven't done yet, but there's, yeah, there's already a raise in there, not saying he does or doesn't deserve it, but is that something that we decide, and we did last year?
I'd like to say this, I feel like I've earned this money just by the fact that when I got here, we were in the red, and we're not now, and that we're on the track to, you know, make money, you know, I've created four new revenue streams that we didn't have, and that we're on the track to create two more with the Marina, and that by my managing those projects, we can charge administrative fees to the grant that will more than pay my salary when we're done. But I feel, I feel like I've managed us-
I'm not saying you don't, you don't deserve whatever it is you're getting, I'm saying I don't understand what it is you're getting.
Okay.
Because-
I feel, I feel very strongly that I've managed us into a very strong financial position.
Yeah.
One that we weren't anywhere near when I got here.
I, I guess I agree. I mean, you take out the payroll tax, and the total compensation for you, the salary plus benefits, and your retirement would be a separate benefit, so, is that the way you understand it, Scott?
Yes, yeah.
So, you want it broken down differently, then?
No, I, I understand where it's at.
Okay.
I just, I just, that, take the payroll tax, that's not included in a salary, so...
So, the part that we're still trying to figure out is-
Is the retirement part?
No, is, if we accelerate it above an amount that we agreed to, that's it.
Well-
Have we reached an amount larger than what we agreed to in public meetings and...
Oh, true, because he's, this, he's asking for a raise on this one.
Yep, that one, and before, and there was, there was some question before, we thought there was overpayment, and he was going to reimburse, and then, yeah.
I think probably the thing was also the contract, the details in the contract got blurred.
Yeah, where you all thought the contract said one thing, but, you know, the contract that was signed by Jean said something else.
Right.
You know, when, when, when I was hired, you know, Jean and I went to lunch, and she said, you know, "Are you good with this month per month?" And I said, "Yeah," and that's what you put in the contract. And, and that started the difference.
Yeah.
And we had the whole insurance thing, and Obamacare, and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you really don't have a new contract, though?
No, I don't.
No, we should, we should figure it out.
Well, I would, I would like one, and I would like it to be a multi-year contract.
Absolutely, yeah. And we'll make copies of it.
Yeah, there you go. And y'all get one, yeah.
Keep it, we'll keep it somewhere.
So, for my help, when was that con, did that contract already expire?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it was signed in 2015.
Yeah, so we never really have signed another contract.
No.
Yeah, when I was the board chair, we, we started going down this contract, and that's not the way I remember it, but then we, we produced it, and I'm like, wow, that's really not the way I remember it, but Jean was the board chair, so there it was.
And I was brand-new, didn't know any better, you know?
So, I think we should just clean it up, like Leanne said, wrap it up, make sure our, our employee is fairly compensated and rewarded for his good work.
Yeah, rewarding is not feasible.
Yeah, and, yeah, and it's, it's still, you know, the, the contract's confusing. What went on for those years is confusing, and what I remember, what we started out with, is not what we ended up with.
Yeah.
And I still don't, that's why I ask all these questions every year.
No, and-
Because I still don't understand it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I understand payroll tax, I understand retirement, I understand all that, I just, I don't know how we got to that number.
Well...
So, when do you want to do that?
When, Larry, when do we have to do that, to finalize the budget?
Well, we're, you're supposed to approve the budget on Monday.
Monday at our meeting?
Yeah. So, we could sit down sometime like tomorrow or Monday.
That won't work for-
Or Saturday, you know?
I mean, I don't see why we can't approve the budget with-
What about that amount?
-that amount in there, but the, the contract is-
Well, you know what we could do? We could approve the budget the way it is, because it's balanced, and then, if we need to amend it, then we just approve an amended budget at a future meeting.
I mean, I remember last year, kinda talking about the raise, and felt that, what was the last year, four and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
And this is four point four, so that's, you know, the percentage is less, but it's a smaller percentage on a larger amount.
Sure. Well, I agree with what you said. I still have a problem that you're working with an expired contract, and that's, that's on the commissioner's part to get that cleaned up, so, um, I will not be here on Monday, as I told you. I'll be in the woods up in northern Washington, but, um, I would like to make it a priority for us to get that contract cleaned up, and whatever raise is decided upon, we approve.
Yeah.
So, if we have to do it, we can do an amendment to the budget.
Yeah.
Yes, so...
I'd like to get that done as soon as possible, even if it's right after the, after the meeting. I don't know if you have any time during the week or not, first week, do you?
Yeah, I'm good to do it tonight, if you want to.
Excuse me.
Is there a accountant?
Dave.
Dave? Did, did he make any progress on what he was looking through?
No, I don't know.
Actually, he is, I talked to him the other day-
Oh, God.
And asked the same question, and he had a question about the medical expenses, you know.
Okay.
I gave him that, and he said he was pretty close to being finished with it.
And when will it get done, do you know?
I didn't ask him, he just said pretty close, so I assumed that meant soon.
I mean, we can approve the budget, and, I mean, if your, if your contract is signed by the first of the year, I think we're doing good.
Yeah.
Well, there's three things we need to get, a new contract, we need to do an evaluation-
Yeah.
And any amendments, or discussing about how that all works. So, anyway, sooner the better.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Any other questions on it, Mike?
Just going through it, um, I know Larry mentioned the, the Allen, so it looks like we, do you think that if we got a pay station, or when we get the pay station, that the Allen revenue will go up, like the North Shore revenue?
It's not gonna go up to the degree that did, but I'm convinced that it's going to go up.
I think with the dock upgrades, I mean, over seventeen years I've been here, we get so many requests for power and water, and we would have mortgage out here, so we're gonna have something to offer.
How many slips will be available?
Uh, twelve. We got the engineering drawings, I got those last week.
Mm-hmm.
He's got a couple of questions about a couple of things, but we're kinda stymied until the archaeological survey is finished. I did engage somebody to do that this week, so that's, that'll be moving forward. She's supposed to talk to Bill Ray and find out where he's at. If the Corps of Engineers is involved, that trumps the state, so, you know, we can maybe speed this up somewhat, but my goal is to be ready to go there about the first of May, so...
How many slips?
Twelve.
Okay. Great. Well, okay.
Let's see, let me go through this one more time, I think I had a couple other questions. You know, that's why we didn't put any revenue in there for that either. You know, I didn't put revenue in for the-
Yeah, that's, that's good, actually.
For the credit card charges, and I didn't put revenue in for anything to do with mortgage there. You know, we, we went off the mortgage that we have for this year and last year, but that's the only mortgage that we put in here. Didn't put anything for anticipated revenue from the new Marina. And, I mean, you know, y'all have done this, this is what, going on the fourth time we did this, y'all know, and that's how it works.
I have a question on the Sweetwater, I know that's down the road, but have you heard any updates about this?
No, you know, and actually, I got a email from Mindy, day before yesterday, and she said, "Oh, my God, I haven't talked to you in such a long time." And what, I had gotten an email about, from RCO, about presentations for grants, and what day, and I sent her an email, and I said, "Is this our presentation for Sweetwater Park, or is there something we need to do with this?" And she sent me a note back and said, "Oh, my God, I haven't talked to you forever." You know, we, we need to talk, but no, this isn't it, so...
Oh.
And I put a call into her today, because I thought this might come up tonight, but I just got her voicemail and haven't heard back.
Okay.
No other questions?
Something in the water budget there, um, we did in, we did put in one hookup fee, because we've had a lot of interest in, you know, is, is this your water system if I buy this lot? I've probably talked to a dozen people here in the last couple of months, and Jeff Carey is in the process of paving some road where we have water, because he's trying to find where the valve is, and Don's been up here talking to him, and they've been digging, trying to figure out where it is before he paves, so, you know, we can get a box around it. But, I anticipate, I only put one hookup fee in there, but I think, you know, we may have more than that when it comes up.
Does he have lots that he's going to sell?
Pardon?
Does he have lots that, does Jeff-
If he gets all this stuff done, yeah.
All the infrastructure done, okay, cool.
Yeah. So, I put, I put that in there, and, like I said in the narrative, we only have one more payment on the IDD loan for next year, so, and then the water system will be paid off.
Yeah, that's great.
But I wanna start building some reserve. We, we have a thousand dollars here in a reserve fund, but I'd like to start building on that, because if we ever have to fix anything, it's not gonna be cheap.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And that's why I said, those aren't ifs, they're whens. And the capital budget also for the oyster house, I did not, I originally had included the hundred and sixty thousand dollars that-
Bonnie got.
That Bonnie got for the Historical Society, but Judy very rightfully pointed out, that's not our money.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be budgeting it, but, so I took it back out. And then you can see the Allen dock upgrades are funded, that three sixty-four is the amount, although we, we got three seventy-nine, they hold back a certain percentage of it for their administration fee, so, this is the amount that we have to work with.
You know, capital budget, oh, there we are.
So, and what I put in there for the capital budget request for the oyster house was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, or a hundred and ninety, no, wait, two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, total of two hundred thousand. And I put five hundred thousand in for real estate acquisition for O'Grain's property. I know that's completely unrealistic, but, uh, by the time, I'm in the process, I'm hoping to finish the grant application up tomorrow, two hundred and fifty thousand by the time we get done with everything might be realistic, even if we only pay a hundred and twenty-five for the, the property.
Right.
But we're gonna have to do, you know, mitigation on tearing it down and all sorts of other stuff. You know, plus the construction of the parking lot there.
Right.
You know, it was brought up when you mentioned that, probably, I don't know if I should say that yet, but, because it is an old building, um, with the grant that we get to, to purchase it, is that required that it has to be something to do with boating?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Okay.
And what we talked about was that's where we park boat trailers.
Okay.
You know, just kinda, instead of having them all lined up out here or out here, you know, that's just...
People very happy.
Yeah. That'd, that'd make the ramp a lot less congested, even if it's just, you know, a staging area while they get their boat in the water, come back and, you know, get their boat, what they're gonna do with it, get their stuff in it, whatever.
More room for the Oyster House museum parking.
Yeah, there you go. Plus it helped clear, clear the pathway for getting the Oyster House through there.
That's true.
True. Be shorter distance.
Here you go.
Might save some money.
There you go. And I got, I think I said this in my report last month, is I got a bid on getting that, that moved and the guy had told me 50,000 on the phone and when he came on here and looked at it, he said 29 plus some insurance cost. So it's not as much as we originally thought, which I thought was good news.
Yeah. Well, I don't have any other questions. Do you?
No, I don't either.
Okay, well, you wanna open the public hearing and then close the public hearing?
Sure.
Since we don't have anybody to testify?
We will open the public hearing on the 2019 budget. Do I hear anything?
Dana, anything?
Nothing? All right. Public hearing is closed.
All right.
No comment. Okay. Uh, do you wanna try to set a date for, in regard to Larry's contract and...
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe, like I said, we can, we can approve the budget and then...
Well, you don't have to approve it tonight anyway.
No, I mean, on Monday, I don't think we have to do your, your contract before Monday.
No.
I'd like to see what Dave's got and this kinda...
Yeah, get the old contract.
Kinda go up to, kinda go through a history and just, just once and for all, fix your contract.
Now, I'm, I'm all for that. And, you know, what he could do if he wanted, oh, one thing that, uh... Well, this is gonna come up Monday, y'all might wanna just think about it right now. We are gonna do the thing with writing our own checks.
Yes.
Uh, one of you has to be a signer. And you might wanna decide who's gonna be the chair next year and have that person be the signer.
Okay.
Ted's true.
Yeah.
Decided to rotate it.
That's good news.
And so when would you like to meet?
At the moment, I am open.
If we're looking at next week, I don't get back till the third.
I don't think we're, we're in that big of a rush.
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, you know, we've, we've gone along all this time.
I gave you that self-evaluation form, you could dig that out.
Sure.
It's a lot better for you to tell us everything you've done and then you can feel like... Trying to get to my Google Calendar.
Have to go back in my calendars and look.
I, I'm sure I've got it somewhere too.
No, I, I have the form.
Can we discuss it? Well, I guess Ted won't be at Monday's meeting.
Hey, do you want me to put that on the agenda for Monday?
To, well, we could pick a day today.
You would email that contract to us, right?
Sure.
Yep, and if you were looking over on Monday and I could look it over when I get back, I just won't have any cell service or anything while I'm going.
The, the big issue in that contract was the fact that the port agreed to pay for insurance for myself and my family. The problem is we can't find any insurance for me and my family 'cause we're basically a group of one.
We dug it all the way through to the zip code.
Yeah, and I actually met with Terry Luther last week to discuss this exact thing and, and the other issue is that we can't pay for your insurance, so all we can do is...
Right.
Give you an increase in pay to...
Cover it.
Cover it. And that, that was when, you know, a lot of that...
Right, that was all that Obamacare stuff, yeah.
The pay went up, but we're not, we're not paying for your insurance.
And, you know, we're paying what's probably the minimal, minimal amount we're gonna pay because, you know, we're paying basically my and my wife's Medicare premiums and our supplemental and then a policy for price.
Yeah, you, you guys are paying a minimum, but if we...
Well, what I'm getting at is the amount is...
Oh, right, no, I agree, 100%.
I mean, just covering me alone would be more than we're...
Yeah, what Terry told me was, was we, we can't, we can't pay for a Medicare supplement.
Right.
So we would have to buy an entire policy for you and your family.
And that was, and that was the whole thing about how the amount got raised last year.
No, I got you.
Because remember, we went through all of that stuff and then we had to figure out, since that was income, the increase in taxes and, and Jan figured all that stuff out?
Barely, that's why. That's why, because Jan was sitting in a meeting with us.
Yeah.
I just think we need to fix it once and for all.
Just have a pay rate that covers that.
So when do you wanna meet?
Ted, when, when are you back?
After the third?
I'm back on the, I'm back on the third, late night the third. So the fourth would be the first day, the ninth, I'm, I can't.
Have an Oyster House meeting here tonight, on the ninth, so we won't do that. I'm open right now.
And the eighth is Columbus Day, is that a holiday for us?
No, I think we trade that one.
Do we trade that for something?
Double check, have to double check whatever the county schedule is.
I'm good either the 11th or the 18th.
The 18th is small ports.
Oh, okay.
Which I will be able to attend by my, by my dismay. I have to go to Texas.
Again?
The 11th is a Thursday?
Yeah.
That, that looks good to me, oh, no. Does Wednesday work?
Uh, Wednesday should work.
Okay, Wednesday would be better for me.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Okay, we got something at...
I got five events on the 11th.
We got a meeting here at 5:30 on Wednesday in this room, so we could meet upstairs.
Yeah.
You know, I know it has to be a public meeting, but...
Had him upstairs.
Yeah.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Send me a reminder.
Yeah, would you send me a reminder, 'cause apparently I don't remember things. Can't believe I forgot. Haven't done that in a long time.
You know, we used to just call and...
Well, I was here yesterday, you'd think I'd remember.
Larry just sent that?
Hmm?
Did Larry just send a meeting?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Ted just sent me a calendar invitation.
Okay.
All right.
So I still have to.
I just put it on my calendar.
Think we go through public comment?
Yes, we closed that already.
Are we adjourned?
Public comment, yeah, sorry, you're right, public comment. Anything, no? Good for being here.
Good of the order.
I get the order, I would move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second?
So moved.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, it's fine. All right.